City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Holland?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present and here. Oh my. Commissioner Abraham, would you mind leading us in the invocation?
I will. My Father, which art in heaven, and my Father, we thank you so much for today. We continue to be amazed at the opportunities that you've put in front of us. One of the most powerful things that you gave us is the power to choose. So let us reflect on the choices in front of us and choose wisely. These things we ask in the Lord's name. Amen.
Thank you. You'll stay standing, we'll do the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, City Manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, first up tonight, we have an exciting presentation for a scholarship award, and I'm still new at this, right? So I just learned that Paducah Power is a member of the American Municipal Power Incorporated, and they are here to give a scholarship out tonight. So Mr. Harry Phillips, if you want to come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And yes, it is an honor to be here tonight. AMP is a municipally wholesale power supplier for 135 member communities in nine states. And we have about 650,000 customers in our member communities around the nine different states. And besides the power source, we offer other services like environmental, some renewable energy, sustainability, legal, and these are some of the other things that we, you know, offer our members to on an as-needed basis. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm here to award a Gorsuch Scholarship. We give out four of those, and that's to a graduating senior whose parent or legal guardian works for the Paducah Power. And we had four of these to give out this year, and it's my honor to be here this evening. To date, we've given out $308,000 in scholarships since 1988. It's in memory of Richard H. Gorsuch, who was a president of AMP, and he was a big proponent of public power. So the Gorsuch Scholarship participants, there were 17 of them from our member communities in the AMP footprint. They had to write an essay about public power, and those top scores became the finalists. AMP Board of Power, AMP Board of Trustees approved four recipients based on their scholastic record and personal achievements and their test scores. So I'm very pleased here tonight to give Peyton Wicks. She is the daughter of JR and Kathy Wicks. JR is a service technician for the city. Peyton is a graduate of McCracken High School. Peyton is planning on attending the University of Kentucky to study biology with a minor in political science. Peyton was extremely involved in school and community activities. She was a member of the National Honor Society of High School Scholars and an active member in the National Honor Society. Peyton was a current news sports writer and editor for her high school newspaper, as well as being involved in the Future Business Leaders of America and Beta Club. As a part of the Leaders Save Lives Program, Peyton coordinated and hosted and volunteered at a local blood drive that produced 26 units of blood for saving 78 lives. She has also volunteered for many other community activities. So we find Peyton to be a talented young lady, and I'm pleased on behalf of the Board of Trustees to present her with $2,500.
Nice, congratulations.
I don't know if you have a speech that you want her to give?
It's up to her. No pressure, no pressure.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you guys for coming and giving out the award. Congratulations, and good luck at UK.
Thank you.
Uh huh, yeah. Okay, next up, we're going to invite Susan Bayer from the library, McCracken County Library, to give us an update on what she's got going on. And by the way, thanks for coming to our meetings, we see you out there quite often. Yeah.
I enjoy it, thank you for having me. Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am here to talk about our community survey, that's the first step in our strategic plan process. I've been on the job now six months, and one of the initiatives the Board assigned me was to develop a new strategic plan. And as the new director, I get asked a lot, what are your plans for the library? But I think it's more important to find out what the community wants for its library. So this is the first step and a whole fall full of activities for developing the strategic plan that will take us into the next decade. So the first step is a community survey, and we did a soft launch last week. It is available on our website, and it's available through all of our social media links, and it's also available in hard copy in the library, and it will be live through August 5th. In just less than a week, we already have more than 400 responses, which is fantastic. The level of engagement has been beyond my wildest dreams. And to incentivize people to give us their feedback, four lucky respondents will win $50 gift cards to Books-A-Million. And we are encouraging the entire community to fill it out, particularly, we want to hear from people who don't use us, or people who maybe used us in the past and haven't for years, because we want to know what we could do to make them part of our family again, to bring them back to the library. We think it's just important to hear from the people who aren't using us, as it is for the people that are using us. So we want to get the word out that this survey is available. Tell us what you like, tell us what we can improve, tell us what community needs you think the library can fulfill. We want this to be part of a bigger conversation. Of course, we want to know what we can do better in the library, but we also want to open up the dialogue to talk about what issues are facing Paducah and McCracken County, and how the library could be a part of coming to solutions for those. So the survey is the first step, and I'll have more information in the fall about our next steps, but we are planning a series of focus groups, and also some public visioning sessions, so we start a dialogue, and also, it helps me as a new director to learn more about the community as well. So we're thrilled about this, and we encourage you all to respond, and as always, I'm open to your questions and comments and concerns. I'd love to keep that dialogue open.
Great.
Not to be the star student, but I already filled out my survey.
She did.
Last week during the soft launch.
Yes, yes, I think you were one of the first, maybe 20, so thank you very much. Commissioner Holland?
That phrase will get you everywhere.
We were going to give you a ribbon, but we forgot it. Yeah. Well, thank you very much for being here, and we'll make sure to fill it out.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so before we go to the consent agenda, we are going to introduce Personnel Action, just because it's an exciting time for us, but I'm going to let Jeff take that away and do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor Harless. On the consent agenda tonight, our Personnel Actions, and tonight on that list is my recommendation for the appointment of Tamara Tracy for Director of Planning, so I'd like to make a couple comments and invite Tracy to come forward, Tamara, excuse me, to come forward and make a few comments of our own. Tamara comes to us from the City of Indianapolis Metropolitan Planning Department, where she is a division head there and has headed up multiple divisions over the course of her career that goes back with the city to approximately 1988, I believe. So she's been with the city most of that time, save for a short stint as an administrator of a township in the Indianapolis area. She brings a lot of enthusiasm, she brings some identity with Paducah by virtue of having been a visitor on multiple occasions, and a broad array of experience in areas that I think are going to do nothing but strengthen what I believe and what I think we all believe is an already very strong team in the Planning Department. So it's with a great deal of pleasure and anticipation that I introduce you all to Tamara Tracy.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much, City Manager. My name is Tamara Tracy, and I am truly excited about choosing to come to Paducah. And I take great pleasure and inspiration from your invocation about the choices we make, and we need to be mindful of those. And as Jeff alluded to, I had come to Paducah earlier as a tourist, and I thought, oh, what a wonderful place, what a wonderful place. And then the opportunity came, and I jumped on it. And I'm very glad about this choice that I'm making, and I hope that you make, tonight, to join a most creative team and a most talented team of directors and planning staff. When I came to Paducah from Indianapolis, I was struck by the forward-thinking and the change, and just the attitude of the people of wanting to make their community better. And that's the kind of community I want to live in, and that's the kind of community I want to work in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're so excited to meet you finally.
We'll enjoy each other working together.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda, items on this agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member shall request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The City Clerk will now read the items recommended for approval.
Minutes for the June 27th, 2017 City Commission Meeting, receipt and file documents, Personnel Actions, and a municipal order authorizing the Park Services Department in partnership with the George Wilson Safety Foundation and the Rotary Club of Paducah to apply to the Tennessee Titans Foundation for a $62,500 grant to be used for installation of a Play 60 Challenge Course at the Health Park.
Second.
And I need a motion and a second. He made the motion.
Second. Thanks. All right. Will you call the roll?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right, next up, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of an alley from Kentucky Avenue to the alley originating at Marine Way, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of the brick-paved portion of an alley from Kentucky Avenue to the alley originating at Marine Way, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quick claim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second. Any discussion? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Mayor, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closure of an alley between 2054 and 2062 Broad Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to the same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of a 15-foot alley between 2054 and 2062 Broad Street, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quick claim deed from the city to the property owners in and abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Discussion? No? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay, moving on the same theme, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closure of an alley between Ohio Street to the 16.5-foot alley between South 11th Street to South 12th Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of a 16-foot alley between Ohio Street to the 16.5-foot alley between South 11th Street to South 12th Street, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quick claim deed from the city to the property owners in and or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closure of two alleys bordered by Maggie Street, Urban Cobb Drive, Lucas Drive, and Bridge Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of a 16-foot unimproved alley and a 12-foot unimproved alley between Bridge Street, Lucas Drive, Maggie Street, and Urban Cobb Drive, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quick claim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Am I missing the alley closure trend? I think that's a trend. All right, City Manager, any comments?
I really don't. Mark, Rick, either of you have anything? Mark, why don't you come comment on 4th of July, I know it's been a week ago, but it was a rounding, resounding success from all angles, so let's cheer a little bit about it.
Literally cheer.
You get the star student ribbon for this one.
Thank you all very much, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. It was a terrific day, we had terrific bands. Everybody's staff, police, fire, county staff, emergency management staff, my staff, put on a great show, kept the place clean. I think the change of the venue for the food vendors and everything else, the lines were long, but they weren't knocking people down the hill like they would have if they were on the other side of the flood wall. But then, at the end, as all of y'all who were there, the fireworks were absolutely tremendous, and great timing, coordination with the music, and then everybody's favorite that they found out with their new favorite of the fireballs on the water.
I'm about to explode, please let me say something. Go ahead.
It was so amazing, I literally teared up. The music was so amazing, and the fireworks, there were fireworks I'd never seen before, including, there was like fireworks on the water.
Oh.
There were these fireworks that would like explode and twist, I mean, I really cannot say enough. I was getting stopped on the street. All over Facebook, every, it was universal, people were blown away, pardon the pun, everybody loved it. Such a good job to the whole staff and team.
And the National Anthem was pretty dag on good.
Is there any way to put speakers outside, just enhance, outside of the flood wall? So people, because there were a lot of people on up in the parking lot.
And Carson Center's lawn.
Lawn, where I was over in there, that...
It can be done, according to the town guy, because he was in a thread that Commissioner Holland and I ran.
It can be done, but as he said, it's just that.
There were several hundred people in the new riverfront area, so I think that's going to necessitate in itself a little bit of thought about how we might centralize some things, because, and I sacrificed hearing the music and everything, because I just wanted to be down there to see how many people were going to be there, and I was pleasantly surprised to see how many folks were down there, even though it's not in its final state of readiness, or, you know, quite as appealing as it'll be next year, so, wow.
From what I understand, it was a great angle for the fireworks.
It was, it was a great angle, yeah.
It's, it's just a little bit of money.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't think we've met since Leader McConnell was here with the money for the flood wall. Do you want to mention that, Jeff?
Yes, hopefully, a lot of people heard last week that Senate Majority Leader and Kentucky Senior Senator McConnell was in Paducah to formally announce that the Senate had approved the full appropriation for our flood wall rehabilitation project, some $19 million, which is, I believe, 65% of the projected cost, with our 35%. And it's always great news, but it's particularly good news because it came together so quickly, because it's only been about a year and a half ago that we sort of lost our authorization, because over time, the budget for the project had grown and exceeded what had previously been authorized by some measure, so a lot of quick work and a couple trips to Washington, and a lot of work on the part of the Senator's staff and himself resulted in the project not only being reauthorized quickly, but the funding being approved very, very quickly. So I haven't caught my breath and talked to Rick yet about what that means about the project timetable, but as it stands right now, our first phase project is still a go, and we'll proceed with that, and then I guess the strategy for going forward will be clarified. Sometimes getting a lot of money at one time presents its own challenges, just because of the enormity of that, and certainly, given the way the flood wall operates, I'm sure, Rick, it'll still be done somewhat sequentially, or in multiple phases, but I may be wrong about that, again, we really haven't had that conversation, but we'll be in touch with you more on that. But the good news today is the money's been approved, and it's just a wonderful thing.
Great. Anyone else? I'd like to give a little update on my trip to France for the UNESCO meeting. I blogged about this while I was gone, it was really important to me to be observing what the potential of our UNESCO designation really has and played for Paducah, and I told Mary Hammond this at the CVB, and her and her team did such a great job of organizing our trip there, that I was very curious about how we leverage our UNESCO Creative City designation for the real potential of our city, and so it was a big question I was asking myself along the time. And as I walked into the room with leaders from 60 other cities around the world, it was a very nice overwhelming experience that we were on the radar with these other cities, and places that our own country might not know that Paducah exists, sometimes places around the world know that our city is here. We also were able to spend some time with our fellow craft and folk art designation, so in the Creative City designation, there's seven different creative fields that you can designate as. We are the one under craft and folk art. So there were about 15 leaders from 15 different cities, including Fabriano, Italy, some cities in Korea, and Japan, and China, Santa Fe, New Mexico is also in there with us, and it was a neat thing to observe. Someone was mentioning that in the light of what's happening in our world, and sometimes our nations aren't getting along as much as we'd like for them to, that our cities are coming together at a time like this, together under this creative idea, that we can get along and we can collaborate. And to that nature, we had the opportunity to invite these cities to come join us in September. We're hosting the first craft and folk art meeting of the UNESCO Creative Cities in Paducah in September. And so we will have people from all over the globe joining us in Paducah, and I just, they are excited to come. Some of them, it will be their first trip to the United States ever, and they're coming to Paducah. So it's a really great opportunity. We started down the pathway of talking about how we could exchange with and collaborate with these cities, so the last blog post that I wrote, I had taken notes during the Mayor's Forum, where mayors from about 30 cities got up and demonstrated or presented around projects that they have going on, and so I listed about 15 different opportunities that our citizens can get engaged with, including, you know, entering the Literary Award in Dublin, including being a part of design competitions in places like Chengdu, China. So these are real opportunities that our citizens have available to them, and I just want to really encourage people, and all of us, to encourage our citizens to look at those opportunities, and call Mary Hammond at the CVB or myself, and engage with those, because these are real opportunities for exchange. I mean, sometimes they come with funding attached to them, too. So I just really want to continue the conversation, we had so many leaders in our community help to get that designation, it was not a small thing to do. We are one of six cities in the entire country of the United States that have this designation. So I just really walked away understanding the impact that it can have if we really grab onto it and run with it, so it was good.
Is there a clearinghouse where people can go see those opportunities?
There isn't yet. On my blog, there is, I literally listed every one that I heard of. So right now, that's the only spot, but if people are interested, they can go talk to Mary at the CVB, and she can connect anyone who's interested in doing some of that exchange. Yeah. So with that being said, I'm going to move on to some public comments, we have, LG, you want to come on up?
All right.
Welcome.
Mayor, City Commissioner, we just addressing the explosion we had at DAR Pro. We just want to, you know, I've got the neighborhood, Joe Jones, Mr. Bill, Dennis Jackson, Mr. Edmonds, we're just concerned about the situation over there, because it's just, it was a devastating thing that happened, and we're worried about it happening again, and what's the chances, you know, being safe over in that area? We have a lot of things going over in that area, some of them are not good things, you know, we addressed the trucks running all night, we addressed the compost, we can address the JSA, City Refuge, we got a lot of things going over in our neighborhood, and it's taking, kind of taking effect on us, you know? And so we just want to let y'all know, be aware of what's going on over there, and see what we can do to make that neighborhood better. You know, I think it's, I think it's time for us to do that. We can't sleep at night, the refuge trucks, there used to be a no-through truck street there, but now they turn it into a street where everybody can come through. It would be all right for emergency vehicles, but they run them down the street 60, 70 mile an hour, and we just can't sleep, just a whole lot of problems. And we want to make sure that we're safe when that plant, when and if that plant reopen, and that we don't have to be afraid the same thing happened again, okay? All right?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Can the City Manager, are you going to speak to that? About to ask him. Sure.
Couple things, and I mentioned with some of the folks for the meeting, and made sure that what I had communicated to you all about the linkage between DAR Pro and the residents for bringing forward any issues with property damage was in place, and I believe understood that it is, and that people have the opportunity to have their property assessed through their own means, and then if there's determined to have been damage, that DAR Pro representatives will be given that information, and they'll go from there through the insurance process. So I can't comment on matters such as the wastewater treatment plan or the compost pile, other than to say that we can review the operational procedures, but with respect to both of those, there's no getting away from the fact that there is some odor associated with both. Regarding the safety issue at the plant... Regarding the safety issue at the plant, what I know today and can tell you is that there is and has been some cleanup underway. We do not have plans filed with us yet for reconstruction to know what is going to happen or not. We can make assumptions there, but we don't know yet. What I can tell you is that the blower that exploded will not be able to be repaired. I don't mean to sound flippant when I say that, but that will need to be replaced with a new unit, and if and when that happens, it will be done through permit and inspection by the State of Kentucky. So there are, you know, stringent procedures for boiler placements and inspection. So where that's concerned anyway, the state will take care of that. This might be a good opportunity to have a neighborhood meeting somewhere, where we go out and invite folks to come in and share their concerns and issues, and we collectively try to determine what measures there might be to address some of your concerns. Obviously, I was glad to hear and expected to hear that Darling has been responsive to the conversation that I had with him last week. Otherwise, I was going to probably not be at the meeting, because I was going to have to run out there and take the conversation up, but, so I was glad to hear that. And let us know, you know, if that doesn't follow through as you expect, or we'll continue to stay in touch with the company ourselves as well.
Great. All right. Neighborhood meeting. I think it's a good idea. Thank you so much for coming and sharing your concerns with us. Yep, thanks, guys. Okay, unless there's anything else, we are going to stand adjourned. Can I? Motion to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor? Do we need a second for that one? I can't remember. Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.